Looks like the linens show up and the men do not.
There we go. All right, good morning. It is Tuesday, August 24th, 2021. We're convening at the Provo City School District Board of Education. We are meeting at 2080 West, 940 North in Boardroom One. It is currently 7:30, 8:00 M., and we will begin with the roll call and President Melanie Hall.
Rebecca Nielsen, Board Vice President.
Jennifer Partridge, Board Member.
Gina Hales, Board Member.
Terry McCabe, Board Member.
Hey Bryson, Board Member.
Derek Anderson, Business Administrator.
Keith Rutilson, Superintendent.
All right, is there a motion to convene?
I immediately convene.
Okay, motion made by Board Member Partridge, by Board Member Ernie Nielsen. All right, procedure review. I'm going to turn it over to Keith.
Okay, Doug is going to present to us, Doug and please, I don't know, about the procedure that's been worked on and also just the next steps regarding the Raptor system.
Thank you, Keith. Just again, some context for those that might be tuning in or, you know, don't know where we're coming from as far as this work is that we began this process a couple of years ago through a threat assessment that was done by an outside vendor looking at where we were concerned about our possible exposure, our possible vulnerabilities as a school system. So we looked at those results. They did a nice job of being very thorough in all of our buildings and one of the number one things was be aware of who's in your buildings at any time. It's just very simply just know who your visitors are, know who your employees are, know where your students are at, let's secure our buildings and just create that sort of a feeling of we're managed. So that has evolved into the work that, thank you for giving us room on this study session and former study sessions to talk about how we'd implement a policy and procedure that helps us to manage where and how people are coming and going from our buildings. Jason Garrison's team specifically has been working on this hard for some period of time. Last spring, we remember, we did four pilot schools. We learned a lot from those schools. In April, you passed a policy that was to say that we wanted to ensure that our schools were safe. And so since that time, we have begun to refine a procedure under that policy as well as just some protocol around how we're going to be implementing this in more schools. Right now, the schools that are involved are Amelia Earhart, Sunset View, Spring Creek, and Rock Canyon. Those are the four schools that implemented this in about April, about a week apart from each other. Just from visiting schools, and Keith and I had a conversation yesterday, those schools are getting it up and going again. There is still some need for even reinforcing some of the procedures and training of how they manage that with people who come in, including employees who come in. So we know that there's ongoing training needs here. Jason's going to talk a little bit about some suggested language. Some of you reached out to us and said that there's ways that we can even look to improve the language that's in our policy, that makes sure that it's very inviting. We don't want to give the message that this approach is to try and keep people out of our buildings. We're big believers in engagement with the community, particularly the parents. They feel like they can be involved in their kids' education. So we don't want inadvertently to put language in there that discourages them. So Jason's going to present on that. And then in addition to that, he'll outline, not necessarily in any sort of detail today, I think you received the eight or nine-page latest draft of the procedure. Again, understand that's still in draft and working format, but that's received a little bit of review by council and by some other individuals within our staff, and it's beginning to be refined and take shape as a procedure moving forward. But then Jason will also give you an idea of what we're proposing as a next phase of implementation in additional buildings. Now, that's important to you because we want to engage you and the community council and the PTA and so forth in being very much aware of, feeling comfortable with, and understanding how those procedures work and how they'll impact each neighborhood. So that's our presentation today. We'll try and time this so that we are about 10 to 15 minutes of Jason presenting a few slides. I know you've got a lot of things in your board docs that hopefully you had a chance to review. And then there'll be plenty of time for question and answer, knowing that we're on a tight schedule and be done by just a few minutes after eight o'clock today. Go ahead, Jason.
So there's not too much more to add than what Dr. Finch has already started with. Thank you for this, another opportunity to talk about the visitor policy and procedure. And part of those procedures are the Raptor Electronic Visitor Management System. And I think it's important that we identify that there is a distinction between the two, right? The Raptor system is a piece of the visitor's policy that our district hasn't had in place. We've had a couple of procedures, but we've never had an official policy that talks about what the board's vested authority is as far as governing the schools or the facilities as well as the employees and the students, you know, under their supervision or under their control. And so as you look at the visitor's policy, it's been a interesting dynamic of which many of the board members are fully aware of, of balancing a welcoming and encouraging environment for guests, visitors, community partners, at the same time setting some boundaries, some perimeters, some controls as so there's nonstop interruptions or disorderly conduct going on on the campuses, right? That many of our school administrators or teachers have to experience sometimes with unruly or uncomfortable situations. And if they're not having to deal with it, maybe sometimes our students are, right? We've had some custodial issues where parents come in and their students, their own children, are at the expense of some of that, those custodial disputes in the hallways, right? At a game on a Friday night, you know, the behavior there, or maybe someone comes under the influence or someone comes, you know, though they might have a concealed permit, you know, still on a school property, there's still some expectations. And those are just a couple of small little things that are tied into these procedures, okay? If we go to the first slide, the first slide is the policy that got big, real quick. But it did get bigger, in a sense, with some great feedback from our executive council. Again, finding that balance between welcoming, encouraging, but yet setting some boundaries, it's a hard balance. And working with some of my own colleagues across the state on their development of policies because it seems to have been, this visitor policy seems to be not very, I'm not sure what the word is, but it's not a common place. It's just understood that you're going to behave appropriately at schools, but there's nothing in formal policy. And so many districts across the state that I've been working, talking to are in the same process as we are. They may not be rolling out Raptor, but at the same time, they're trying to establish a welcoming, encouraging environment, but yet establishing some boundaries. So this is the policy that was approved a couple of months back. And even looking at this, where it talks about recognizing the positive impact the family, community involvement has for student success, the board's concern is this and this. And then it talks, it's a little bit more on the cold or rigid side of things, right? And that's that boundary part. So what I'll be bringing to you, and I have a copy of it here, but it wasn't for the board docs because it's not going to be approved today, is another statement at the top that has a little bit more of the welcoming, encouraging, the vital reasons why we have to have parents and community involved in our schools, right? So that'll be the top part. So there'll be an amendment to this policy that you guys will be receiving and then voting on, hopefully at the next meeting, right? Okay. So, but that's what was voted on here. So just note that there's a little bit more warm and fuzzy at the top of this, and I'll be glad to share it after the meeting, but it's not something to, we'll be discussing today, or voting on today. We can discuss, but not voting on today. Go to the next slide, please. This has been the brunt of our time over the last, you know, many months, is what should be in the procedures, right? And again, the Raptor Electronic Visitor Management System is just a piece of this visitor's policy, right? A piece of the procedures. But it goes from defining and talking about what district visits are all the way through, and it talks about, obviously, the school or the board vesting the superintendent down to the district or school administrators to being able to operate, supervise, manage their schools or their facilities as to what they feel is what's best and what's appropriate, right? And safe for employees and the students. So these are subcategories that are inside the procedures. And that's what you should have in front of you on your board docs. Still in draft form. It's still ongoing because some things apply to our district more than others and some things needs a little bit more, needs better language probably. But you can see that we tried to cover almost every gamut of someone visiting our campus, what the expectations are, the do's and the don'ts, what we expect from them, but also what we don't want from them, right? And then, of course, at the end of the day, as the board, you vested the superintendent and the district and school administrators to, within reason, make that determination as to what's safe and what's best for the welfare of all our employees and our students. So that's kind of what's-
Can we go on, Jason? Do any of those bulleted items up there surprise you at all? Any comments on those?
No, because many of these I've experienced firsthand myself.
What about the board? Especially the last, the very last one?
Just trying to make this controversial.
No, why not?
People have been arguing.
I guess my point is that especially that last bullet, we will get occasional guidance from the state legislature with new laws that say that we must allow certain things to come on school grounds and on and on and on. Not that you can, but you must. So we're trying to thread a needle here in the dark a little bit because there's a lot of pressures from all sides on this.
And I'm not sure it shows it, it might show it, it shows it on the new policy, but almost all of these are attached to a law or an ed code that's already existing in place. This isn't something that the executive board or superintendent has said in their opinion they want. There's a statute for this. There's a statute for this. There's a statute for this. There's a statute for almost every one of those. And they're attached. And so if you look at the, when you look at the new updated policy that'll be presented to you, you'll see that the laundry list of references has grown almost triple because I wanted to make sure there was an attached statute or a bill or a law or an ed code that was attached to each one. So it didn't look like we were arbitrarily deciding who was coming and going and what was allowed or not allowed. We're following state, federal or state statutes or policies, okay? So you'll see that when that gets, whenever the superintendent wants me to present that to you.
Okay.
Next one. Okay, Raptor. This has been the hot topic, right? Because this is a systems change, right? This is a new way of doing business for our schools. There's a lot to the customer service element to this, right? And again, it's not allowing just anybody to come onto campus when they want, why they want. We need to be able to account for anybody that's on our campus at any given time. One, for the safety and welfare of our employees and students, but two, for emergency purposes, first responder purposes, reunification purposes, we need to know who's on our campuses. Who are we looking for? Who are we not looking for? Okay? So as Dr. Finch alluded to, we rolled this out for pilot schools, best practices. Some of you have seen a little bit, I tried to put this down, but it all started with lots of discussion with our district departments. We had multiple departments involved in discussing how it would impact them, right? And the people that they knew that they were serving each day. We trained each of the schools individually. We met with either the school community council or the PTA, and on one school, we met with both to provide information, Q and A, open forum, communication with the communications department. Caleb's team did a phenomenal job making sure all the communications were in English, Spanish. We had videos made, tutorial videos. We had big sandwich board, A-frame signs. Everything was hopefully really easy on the eyes, easy to understand. And then we had, we made sure that we had somebody in the vestibules for those four pilot schools as we rolled out for the first couple of days so that they can customer serve and welcome and educate and answer questions and assist along the way. So if someone's not just going in by themselves trying to figure it out, there's someone that's going to be there those first couple of days. And then providing the direct support to troubleshoot, thanks to, I thought I saw, well, Kate is here, but his district technology team, not necessarily him, but he's always a part of helping me in a lot of things. But with Scott and Chad and Levi, who's on our tech security part of the team, they were immediately readily available to troubleshoot any of the tech or software issues, hardware issues, immediately. So that way the front office staff wouldn't get inundated with frustration, but also with, you know, feeling like their hands were tied and had to wait. They were immediately available so we were able to troubleshoot. So those best practices, if we go to the next slide, we're going to continue for the rollout of the next nine elementary schools. And as Dr. Finch alluded to, this is our tentative. I probably should have bolded and made that capital because life happens, right? You can see that we have the rollout of the next nine, what is that, one, two, three, four, nine elementary schools, right? And then, of course, the elephant in the room, secondary, okay? We do have Dixon's ready to roll, Centennial's ready to roll. Centennial has a vestibule, has an entrance kind of concern that I'm concerned with. They enter and then it's, the main office is off to the side. So that it's, there's easy access for people to go this way without the front office even knowing. So anyway, we're trying to work through some of those things out. We're identifying some of those trouble, those trouble spots, right? And of course, Independence is ready to go, but right now, their vestibule and some of their front of the schools under construction. So they have a different entrance, right? As of now. Provo High and Timview, Timview's under construction, as many of you are aware. If not, welcome to that conversation. And then, and of course, you know, Provo, but even when you look at the Provo and the Timview, there's going to be some slight adjustment to how we operate those. When you got 34, I think Provo's got 34 exterior doors coming in and out that are constantly being utilized, right? We're going to have to work with them as well as develop some sort of secondary level procedures because the needs of that school are a little bit different, right? Of the high schools. They're a little bit different. They're a little harder to control and maintain, especially when you have a north door that leads out to a non-school-related class, then they have to come back into another door. Having them come all the way around the school to the main entrance may not be feasible, but when that door is constantly open, it's hard to control the security and access to that door, right? So it's not the students we're worried about, but who else is coming in through those doors. So we're working through those. And we're working with those principals to help identify those. And again, with the remaining rollout, we're going to confirm the dates of the principals, make sure they're set. These first couple of weeks have been, you know, make sure they're getting their feet, you know, on the floor with welcoming these kids back and families. We've contacted all the elementary schools regarding their next SSC and PTA so we can get on their agenda for a 15-minute little information session, Q and A if needed. And of course, we will continue with all those best practices. And you can see the things that the front office staff receives, that we're providing for them. You guys can have the folder too. It's not a secret by any means. But we give the front office staff and anybody else hands-on demonstration. There's a procedural handbook that the front office staff receives, so it's a quick table of contents, quick find. If they had a question on, that may have came their way, some Q and A that they might have. Then we have sample letters, English and Spanish, to families that get sent out. Hey, your school's bringing Raptor. Prepare for this, prepare for that. Signs for the outside, including the vestibule. That was one of the lessons we learned was we had to minimize the language. A lot of the language, we tried to put a lot of good information, but it was a lot of good information. And it kind of actually blended in with all the COVID stuff. Like how busy the COVID signs were, these were another busy sign. Had good information, but it was busy, right? So sometimes some of that information didn't get absorbed as people were coming in. And then, of course, with Elizabeth and her team, you've got Caleb, the social media, the videos, English and Spanish, we provide to them. And then arranging for, in this case, Charity, who's our project manager for the Raptor, to be onsite for those rollouts and making sure, and I've worked with Chad, to make sure that a tech specialist is ready and available. So that's the rollout for these next nine schools. This is what's going to be happening. And then secondaries are TBD.
Sure appreciate Jason's preparation. You can see it takes a whole bunch of individuals to make this happen. And it is, it's one of those things that the community is really impacted by this. We want the schools to still be inviting, but we also want them to feel safe. And finding that balance between the inconvenience of needing to work through a system like this, but yet the benefit of that is, of course, greater safety and security in our schools is our balance we're trying to strike here. So lots of upfront conversation, lots of coordinating with key community members, lots of practice and rehearsal, dealing with people when they have concerns is our intent to work for. So we'll now move to this area where you can post some questions, give us some feedback, and we'll, again, just watch the clock so we don't run over the time. It was a lot of this to us this morning. Go ahead.
Can you give me, since I haven't gone to one of these elementary schools, what's the, in 30 seconds, what's the expected experience? When they're all familiar with it, what's the expected experience when they show up and use this?
So expediencing, number one.
But what do they do? Like if I'm a parent, what happens? I go to the school-
So as soon as you walk in, you have your government-issued photo ID?
Right.
And you put it in a little toaster box?
Right.
A little key, right? It'll register into the software. It'll come up. As it's doing that, it'll go through a sex offender background check.
Okay.
That's all it's going through. And it'll come up, welcome, or it'll come up, possible offender. Possible offender alerts go to the principal and to the SRO and whoever else is assigned. They're welcome. The buzzer gets buzzed in. They come in. As they're coming in, it's already printing a photo badge sticker. They put that on. They go wherever they're destined.
And so mom comes up and doesn't, and she goes, oh. And she's standing there and the principal sees what happens. Does she go back out or do they go, go to the car?
So convenience and safety and security don't go well together.
Right.
Right? And we're really trying to be consistent with our safety and security.
Sure.
And so there'll be a grace period. There will be a grace period each of the schools just because it is a new systems change. We're not just going from Pepsi to Coke, right? Where it's a systems change of doing business. So we're going to have a grace period where they can manually, the front office can manually type their name in, but they're not being buzzed in until that alert comes back, either green or, well, green.
So McKay, they remain in the vestibule where there's a button with the camera on it so they can have that communication with the office staff. So they don't end up necessarily wandering in the office saying, you know, so that communication takes place through the little, the camera on the doorbell. So that's where that communication, hey, can you put me in the system? Left my ID at home. I need to hurry and drop this off for my child, so forth. So they can do some coordination in the vestibule to the front office staff who are live as far as coordinating, communication through video and through audio.
And we, and there's regularly enough staff to answer that. It's not a, be-
So far, there has been. The one request, not the one request, the one ideal situation is that every, that there's a Spanish speaker at the front desk at all times. That's not always the case. But the schools that have not had that, they've been able to find someone in that main office area that does speak enough Spanish just to be able to assist that parent or community member who needs to come in, who needs some Spanish translation.
Yeah. That aspect of having someone live and ready at any time to respond is a piece of the school's implementation. That's a great point, McKay. So we know to make sure and ensure that that's the expectation on the other side.
And how long is that process? They're going to, is it going to take them an extra 30 seconds, an extra minute, an extra two?
To type in someone's-
To put in their ID and go through this process?
It probably takes as long as it takes them to find their ID and get it in there. And then I've done this because I've visited a number of schools and I observed that it was probably less than 15 seconds if you had your ID ready. Because immediately as soon as that was entered into the little card reader or the button was pushed, someone was there live. And each of my cases immediately communicating with me and letting me in or-
So it's not going to like make me late to the dentist when I'm taking my kid out to take him to the dentist?
Depends on how tight you fly under the wire, but I'm not trying to, but I know every second matters though. So efficiency, as much as we can, you know, feasibly make it happen. I'm hearing the message both from you and McKay, we really want to make sure this doesn't begin to be, people are backed out the front door waiting for their turn to get the card reader. And some of that will be a nuance we have to take into account when there is, say, an event like a school that's holding an assembly and parents want to come see their kids perform at the talent show. So there's moments where we'll say this is going to have an impact because a lot of people want to come at once. That we'll have to do some thoughtful preparation, everything from letting them register in advance to perhaps going to some other alternative check-in method besides using the card reader. Because we just don't want to frustrate people when they, again, want to feel like they can come to the school and still participate with their kids like they have in the past. Any additions to that, Jason?
No. The first initial time will take a little bit the longest, but once you're in the system, though you still have to dip your card, it's not the right way of saying it, but, right, put your card in the toaster. Every time after that, it's, you've already been pre-screened in a sense, so it'll go through a quick, quicker background, not a background check, just a sex offender check. And it also pops up, remember, if you have any custodial alerts within Power School. So if there's a parent that's trying to get their kid and they don't have custodial rights, and hopefully the school or the district has inputted that correctly in the system, that alert will pop up as well. And I understand, it doesn't pop up and say, you're bad, you're naughty, you're this, you're that. It just says possible alert. And that means that the principal, SRO, whoever that's assigned to that role would address that situation privately off to the side. Jason, for some reason, it came up.
Knowing that there are certain times of day that are more intense than others, and so when does this, when in the daytime does this program go live and when are you not requiring parents to do that?
Sure. So it's 10, 15 minutes, I think it's 10 minutes after the first bell, and it goes all the way until 30 minutes after the second, not 30 minutes-
I would say it was about 30 minutes on both sides.
30 minutes on both sides.
Yeah.
And then you have, and it's just for the instructional day. Right now, it's not, I have not enlisted, someone wants to help me figure this out, how we can do it for nighttime events or nighttime back-to-school nights or talent show nights, right? That could get a little bit on the bogged-down side of things and I haven't been able to troubleshoot all that yet.
So a parent that is in this circumstance, whose name is on this list for decades in some experience.
Sure.
They're always going to get the, don't come in here?
They'll get the alert where now the principal will have a discussion with that individual as to, there's an alert that came up, we can allow you on campus, but it'll be, it'll be a supervised visit. It'll be a supervised escorted to where you're going. We're never going to deny a parent legal guardian who has something on their record, no access, unless it's court ordered, no access.
So is it clear to the public what is being checked so that the person behind there suddenly knows his family's history?
So in the procedures, it's, the sex offender was probably at one point listed too often, and now it's not, it's listed, I think, just enough. It talks about that's what's being checked. But yet, as a parent legal guardian, you still have every right to participate, provided your court allowed, to participate in your kid's activities, education, but under the supervision of a district or school administrator.
So when it pulls that alert up, how much information comes on the screen?
Oh, it won't, it'll see.
It just says, just directs them to visit with an administrator.
Right.
And perhaps after the first conversation takes place and this individual were to come, there might be, again, that idea of misunderstanding. He knows to check in and then he's just essentially, whether it's to a classroom or just a visit with some of the office staff, his status is better understood after that first visit.
It's not going to pop up and say, class A felon for visiting that.
It's a need-to-know situation. Probably would, that information would only be available to the school administrator who would be trying to just visit through what the concern was that came up, the alert, not the front office staff.
And it's important to remember too, that when we put our ID in there, they're not storing any of the information that's on the ID either.
So in the pilot schools, what's, has there been a perceived error rate where we, you know, just couldn't connect, couldn't find it, you know, where, has there been any-
No. So we, before we rolled it out to the pilot schools, we even, we called in people to practice here at the district office with passport, with green, different countries, green cards, and they all worked fine. Interesting enough, which we just found out at, I think it's at Amelia brought it up. Interesting enough, which we just found out at, I think it's at, Amelia brought it up, the brand-new Utah driver's license didn't get read. And so I put a trouble call into Raptor, and it was something that our tech, pointed Kate, I don't know if he did it, but our tech team just had to reboot, restart, and type in something to recognize that. So we'll have to do that to the three other pilots, but for some reason, like the brand-new Utah driver's license didn't get picked up, but now it does.
So the error rate was very minimal.
So it was a software kind of glitch, but tech was immediately on it and got it remedied.
There was only about a month and a half of experience we've had thus far, so again, that's why we pause and ask for your counsel, knowing that this is a much brighter, broader footprint we're asking for here. We tried different parts of the district. Now, as you can see, it's an aggressive rate of about someone on a Tuesday, someone on a Thursday, the next week, someone on a Tuesday, someone on a Thursday. Just move this along at that rate up until fall break and get the other nine elementary schools on. That's just our look at this, but again, we're under, you know, your advisement to say maybe that's too tortive a pace, or if you say, no, but let's go for it, let's just keep communicating as we have opportunities together, and we'll give you updates as the upcoming board study sessions and meetings are ours, as to how that's going. I'm sure you'll hear, as a community member, I'm sure some of you might have experienced it, Kerry, I think you've used the system, you were very involved in your implementation at some of the schools, right? Is there any experiences that you've heard from your neighborhood or your own personal experiences to answer some of the questions?
Nobody's said anything to me ever, no complaint.
Well, doesn't mean we won't have some in the future, I mean, we can't do anything around here without getting some feedback. You did get an email.
Doug, board members are pretty good about wearing these when they go out and see schools, and they use these as their right hand?
Yeah, that's a great question. How it works with employees or individuals who have this ID is something that I'll have just Jason speak to, because I think that's one of the things, I think from your own experience, Keith, you mentioned to me yesterday, there may be still some, you know, uncertainty about, do they need to get themselves a printed label to put on their lapel, or just carrying this, of course counts for that, if they just use the entry system, right? Is that sound right, Jason?
Right. So all district employees, unless you're new, like within the last week, because you're still being inputted into the employee database system, if you have one of these, Kate, correct me wrong, right, all employees are in the database, so you're still going to be required to check in, we still need to know you're there for emergency purposes, but instead of dipping your card in, into the toaster, you show this up, you buzz it in, you show it up, they see who you are, they type your name, and then you just, they'll buzz you and you're ready to go. This becomes your badge, this becomes what you use.
Yeah, so you don't put this in a card reader.
Right.
You can, and I've entered two different ways, I've pushed the button and shown it to them, and another time I thought, I'm just going to put it, because right there is also the automatic reader that just opens the door, and I just press it there, and I have the clearance to be able to open that door, and I walked in, and walked in the office and just checked in with them that way, just orally, so whichever is the best system.
So you get, if you're on the employee database, whatever the board members are, you're going to be registered already, pre-registered in the system, because you've already been pre-background checked, bit checked, all that, so.
What happens if Raptor goes down, what's the procedure?
Back to the good old pen and paper.
Just, yeah, crazy method of just what we did before we had-
They'll still have to wear a visitor's badge and all that.
And a lot of the schools were good at using those badges or visitor lanyards, I mean, there was just a myriad of different ways. That was back from our feedback we received from the security assistant that came in and said, every school kind of has a different variation how they're managing their visitors, it would be great to have this be more consistent. So we would hope we'd fall back to something that's consistent, they just wouldn't use the electronic system if for some reason it went down, or there was a glitch, or some sort of maintenance had to take place. We'd still expect some sort of office check-in and utilizing some printed label.
So it's only checking the offender list, there's no cross-reference like to why you're in the building for a volunteer or-
You'll make that announcement, so the first procedure is, what is your purpose here, kind of a question that the front office will have, and your destination, and so that will actually show up on your badge, not your purpose.
That is a question, why you're here.
Right, yeah, and it'll show cafeteria, it'll show auditorium, it'll show your name, your picture, and then where your destination is.
So if you're in a place that you're not allowed to be there, they'll make you move?
And that takes place orally with the person who's the receptionist, she types that in, and then she prints the badge.
So few Eastons do in their practice or something like that, they'll say, right?
Yep.
Can I just get clarification on a couple of quick things? You said at one point you mentioned custodial rights might pop up too, so is it checking only sex offender background, or is it also checking custodial rights?
Yeah, right now, the only database that Raptor themselves plugs into is this one that's just generally available for them to access, and that is the registered sex offenders, you know, database. We have the ability, as I think Jason described, to go in there and add some names to it, but that has to be manually done one at a time as we come across custodial agreements that might say there's a restraining order, or there might be, this parent might be able to come drop something out of school, but he can't check his children out. Those kind of things we can add to and kind of create some custom lists that help the front office staff know when to make good decisions based on court orders and other types of direction we've received about who can and cannot be in the building. Could be grandparents, so you run into all kinds of things when it comes to restraining orders, right?
So that might pop up if we manually-
If we put that in ourselves.
Okay, great. And then on the, when the system is active, I just want to make sure I understood that correctly, that was 30 minutes after the first bell and then up to 30 minutes before the last bell? It's in between, it's within the school day, correct?
It's within school day, yes.
Okay.
That's our initial rollout, as we might find that we can tighten that one rather than the other, but that's just our initial, we think that that's the way to kind of avoid some of the troublesome of someone, you know, that flow of latecomers and, oh, they forgot, Johnny forgot his homework, I've got to drop off the lunch, I mean, some of that can be done quickly and efficiently without having to say, that's, it looks like airport at, you know, at Thanksgiving Day. We want to avoid that.
And you can still do all those things, you just can't come in the building, like you can hand all that stuff.
Oh, yeah, yes.
And you can still get your kid out, you can do everything, you just can't-
I'm here in the vestibule, yeah.
You just can't go in.
Yeah, so that's just, and that's the nice thing, you've seen the construction, you've been in a lot of buildings, that vestibule realignment and construction in some cases, like at Wasatch Elementary School, they didn't have a vestibule in the past to be able to hold this process together. Mark's department was really thoughtful in advance of knowing that we had to create some physical structures before this could be feasible. That's why, again, even as we look at the secondary schools, it's a piece of the puzzle of saying, is there one location that could work in implementing this? I think we feel like there's a chance that middle schools might be a little bit more feasible than our high schools, so we're going to be a little bit bold and probably come to you in October and say, here's what we've learned, and this is how I think the junior highs are ready to come on board. I know Dixon has approached Jason and I both with excitement and encouragement about wanting to do it sooner than later. Centennial does have a little bit of design feature that we're going to have to work through the details of how to iron that piece out, where it's not line of sight really once someone walks in the door, but we'll get there. But we appreciate everyone's patience, particularly the community's patience and understanding that this has got all the right intentions behind it. It will cause possibly some occasional inconvenience, but we're dedicated and committed to put the people and the training and the patients on our end by trying to treat people right as they continue to want to come to our buildings. I think as we've gotten to our time, it was allotted to us.
Okay, is there any further questions about this?
Be willing to reach out anytime, and as you've seen, this isn't the last conversation we're having with you about this. We appreciate your engagement and support of this effort, we think it's going to make a big difference in our, in our community and our schools.
Well, thank you to your team.
I go.
Thank you. All right. That comes to the end of the study session, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Okay. Before we start the next meeting, I just want to just-